Community partnerships?
All right, we're going to go ahead and from our recess, we had approval of the agenda earlier at 4:30 PM along with two closed sessions. So with that, just a reminder to viewers that we are in open session at this point. So the superintendent, we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Buck, for your report.
Oh, great. So, good evening. This is kind of a fun piece of information. So, the summer break wraps up tonight for students attending Taylor Elementary School. The 2016-17 school year begins tomorrow, July 19th, and classes begin for all students in the district on the August 23rd. I did have a chance to get to Taylor Elementary today and talk to staff, and there are tons of smiles and lots of excitement there. And part of their theme for the year amongst the staff is juggling. So, it was fun, and it's about juggling your professional life, your personal life, and taking care of yourself. So, like I would say, lots of energy at Taylor today, so I think it's going to be a great start to the year tomorrow. Students from the Iowa Big Program collaborated with the History Center to develop a new virtual museum project called Lynn There Done That. The project takes the History Center's popular walking tours virtual by showcasing significant locations in Lynn County using archived photos, student narrative, and recorded audio. I have to tell you, when I think about that, I wonder what the Pokemon Go version of that might look like. And then there are a number of summer construction projects underway across the district, and we always like to take a moment and thank our public for providing those funds. They are our physical plant and equipment levy funds. So, a few examples include a new gymnasium floor at Viola Gibson Elementary. Crews removed the old sealants, sanded out imperfections, and repainted the lines and logo on the floor. Replacement of old tile in the classrooms and hallways at Grant Elementary. This is being replaced with a new colorful pattern. Lighting is also being updated throughout the building to improve energy efficiency, and the restrooms will also be upgraded to be ADA or Americans with Disabilities Act compliant. Tuck pointing and masonry repairs to the exterior of McKinley Middle School, they are underway. A new playground fence at Johnson Steam Academy, and ADA-compliant restroom renovations at Garfield Elementary. So, as you might guess, that is not an exhaustive list of all the projects that are underway, but we've been working hard to share the news of these updates through our social media platforms. So, we also have appreciation signs in place at each of these locations. So, as you're around the district, you'll see the signs that were just up there. It's a privilege this evening to introduce two new members to our team. The first one I'd like to introduce is Ms. Wendy Parker. She's our new Executive Director of Student Services. So, welcome Wendy. There's Wendy. And then Dr. Carlos Grant, he has joined our team, and he is the executive, I think I'll get this right, Executive Director of Middle-Level Education, Personalized Learning, and Community Partnerships. So, if Dr. Grant seems familiar to some, it's because, of course, he's fresh off the principalship at Metro High School. So, welcome, Dr. Grant. And with that, that's your remarks.
There are board reports tonight. All right, seeing none, I want to also welcome Wendy and Carlos to the administration from all of us on the board, so thank you so much. There was a save the date sent around for the NAACP 74th Freedom Fund banquet on October 29th, so if you're interested in that, make sure you let Laurel know, and it's always a good time, good event. Dr. Buck and I will be presenting at the IASB Fiscal Management Conference on Wednesday afternoon in Ankeny, so we'll have a session with the Fairfield School Board and Superintendent personnel about funding challenges in K-12 education. So, looking forward to that as well. And lastly, I'll pass around, Dr. Buck and Laurel and I went back through all of the board topics from the past year, made sure that we understood what we had already covered and what was still left, and then looked at where the administration was going in terms of topics and things that were coming up in the next year, and just laid out a map of all the upcoming board meetings and work sessions and topics. So, I'll just pass those down. You don't have to take, respond right now, but do, please do take a look at those, and if you have specific questions or suggestions, feel free to leave them on your board evaluation under comments, or shoot me an email directly, or Dr. Buck, or Laurel, and we'll be glad to look at those suggestions. All right, with that, if there's no other comments from the board, we'll go ahead and move into petitions, delegation, and delegations and communications. And the only one that I have tonight is from Lawrence Wenkowsky. So, Lawrence, if you'd like to approach the podium and give us your name and address, and Laurel will time it for you at five minutes tonight for comments.
Lawrence Wenkowsky, 423 Moore Road, Northeast. Just had a couple thoughts about the IASB legislative platform, and these are sort of the perception I have, and hopefully I'm correct about all of what I'm going to say. First thing I have to say is, I can't understand, you know, why the legislature cannot give you's home rule. And that, this is the simplest thing to do, and in my understanding, it's an immediate cost savings for most school districts. So, I'm just confused with that. You know, another thing is about sharing resources and reorganization, and that, I did a little research. Iowa ranks 30th in state population, 31st in elementary and secondary school enrollment, 30th in income, 26th in area, 29th in total wages, additional, oh, that was, total wages we spend for education, administrative, and nonspecific support services were 30th. However, the number of operational school districts we have is 357, which is 18th in the country, which makes no sense. And then if you go ahead and if you took and got rid of 25% of the school districts, and that superintendent's, you would save if you got rid of the 25% of the smallest school districts, is roughly $8.5 million. It could be $9 million by now. And that, I'm just confused. You know, maybe some of the school districts should be run by the AEAs. You know, I think AEA should be set up to be central controllers of like services that are needed within districts. Like, why does every district have to have their own unique webpage at $150,000 to $100,000 a pop? I mean, that adds up quickly. Why does every district, or most districts, have printing services? Why can't there be more centralized print shops, maybe they're bigger, to take care of everybody's printing needs? And purchasing, I have to believe if you're buying paper or whatever you buy, if you buy it in larger quantities, it's still going to be even cheaper. But, that's just my belief. Some of my general disagreement with legislative platforms is numerous organizations who want similar changes in legislation and funding, leaving results up to elected officials to make determinations along with unrelated items. The results are usually that no one gets anything close to what they want. So, why aren't organizations who want changes in similar legislation working together to come up with a single piece of legislation to be so decided on? Why aren't organizations simplifying the process before the legislation process starts in January? For example, mental health. Why just lobby for mental health services for children and not all Iowans? Why can't we have a comprehensive mental health plan for all Iowans? Not all mental health is caused by, you know, that children receive, some of it's caused by the people they live with. If you live with people who have mental health issues, there's a higher percent chance that you're going to get some sort of mental health issues, you're going to need some sort of As for arbitration, the only thing I can say about that is, first thing is, the system's just totally hosed. Arbitration should be totally impartial, independent, and must allow compromises along with the ability to pay. What happens if one, in one district should have no effect on what happens to another. Labor and employment laws, well, student achievement and safety should be the priority of all labor and employment laws to deal with education. As for, and then there's taxes. All organizations should lobby to remove some of the stupid tax deductions, like the tuition and textbook credit. It costs the state about $15 million a year. A tax credit that is only available to filers of loan firms, a credit that allows you to get a credit for paying, if you pay for busing to the school, but not if you pay for busing to the district, like we do in Cedar Rapids.
Excuse me, Mr. Wenkowsky, your time is up. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. We appreciate your comments. And with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like to pull from the board for discussion or comment?
I'd like to have a-
Is Cassie here?
Yes.
I'd like to have a brief synopsis of what's going on, since this is a major expense and problematic.
Absolutely. Welcome to the podium, Cassie.
I'm Cassie Daly from Miller Smith Agency, and we handle all of the district's insurance. More specifically, is there something you were looking for, or?
Overview of our liability, I know we continue to have a lot of accidents as well as workman's comp.
Sure. We actually have the package policy, a package consisting of property, general liability, auto, professional, which is called your linebacker policy. That coverage is all through EMC. This year, we actually marketed your workers' compensation, because claims have been drastically improving, thanks to the great work of Sue Wilper and folks at the district. We were able to get a much more competitive quote from United Heartland this year, so coverage moved that way from EMC to United Heartland. Something more specific I could add to, or?
Well, that's important, and that's the part I wanted to check on is that, and I saw that on this, that said, but why if there's that back history, Heartland wouldn't, the existing company, wouldn't look at that and say, hey, they're making progress, and try and meet that?
Sure. They actually did relook at it twice. Once initially, when we asked them to, they went back and relooked at it. And then again, when the United Heartland quote came in, I gave them a final shot, because the district has been with EMC for quite a few years. So, they just weren't be able to meet the competitive advantages that United Heartland was able to offer. There were some big things, such as the lead claims adjuster is located right in Cedar Rapids with United Heartland. The loss conversion factor, which is the price the district pays on each claim, United Heartland was able to offer 10 cents instead of EMC's 14 cents. So, just some really good things that United Heartland really wanted to partner with the district, and EMC couldn't compete with.
Any other questions?
Something like third-party administration for claims, has that ever been considered for workers' comp?
We have looked at that a little bit. We didn't this past year, mostly because with the large deductible plan, the insurance company then handles all of that claim expenses. That was one thing EMC threw out, however, the cost advantages weren't there compared to United Heartland's 10 cents.
Anything else? All right. Thank you so much, Cassie. We appreciate your comments. Are there any other items to discuss tonight? All right, seeing none, somebody have a motion to approve the consent agenda due to the personnel report?
Sorry, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. So, this is a roll call vote.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye.
All right. Next, we'll turn it over to Gary Anhalt and Laurel Day regarding the IASB legislative platform.
Thank you, John. It's that time of year again where IASB is asking for some input into where they think their priorities, their top priorities should be going into the next legislative session. I have, I'll start with, they're looking for, what we're looking for is four, four or five of our top priorities that we think should be the important areas. I think as I look through, just to summarize, there were 33 different legislative resolutions presented last year, and I think they're all important. They all are of benefit to the district, but there are some that are, I think, more strategic for us. The ones that I picked out would be number 21 and number 20, supplemental state aid, making sure it's on time and that it's appropriate, and school funding policies, looking at that we are receiving, can receive adequate funding. It doesn't set, either one of them doesn't set for a particular flat rate of a lot of growth, just the language says adequate funding. The other areas that I think, that I put down as important would be mental health, and resources for mental health, and early literacy are my four, and then a fifth one that I had was dropout and at-risk. Kristin shared with me before we started, right at the beginning of the meeting, her areas were also 21, no, 20 and 21, and mental health, and standards and accountability, which gets into funding for new testing and so on that we're looking at. So, if I could get some input from someone else, John, do you have?
Well, I mean, for me, it's all about funding at this point. I mean, all of this other stuff is great, but unless we can fund the needs that we have, it's not going to mean a whole lot. So, the Resolution 20 and/or 21, the state penny, seems to be pretty critical that we maintain that.
Okay.
Some of the, I mean, boy, I can sure see preschool being important. There's a lot of literature and discussion about that right now. Dropout, at-risk, again, that's funding in the formula, so that's, again, a funding issue for dropout at-risk, which ties into socioeconomic, mental health, all kinds of other issues with attendance. I sure could go along with mental health. I like what Mr. Wenkowsky brought up, again, this whole idea of home rule, for us as school districts, to be able to go back and manage the funds similar to counties and cities in the state of Iowa would be helpful, so.
I think you have to look at all these, so, because it really sets up a policy and a position of the school district, so, you know, if you see something in, that you don't like within one of those statements, we need to try and change that, because that happened this year, that we did have a policy, and it was there, legislature's proposed something, and, you know, it was a position that we had. And you're absolutely right, I'm looking at Mr. Wenkowsky right now, on a lot of these issues that maybe we need to clarify a little bit more. So, I think, you know, we need not only pick the ones, but be sure the other ones say what we want them to.
Did you have specific examples of that? I mean?
No, I'm just saying that, you know, that you do need to read them through, and they do go in front of the whole group of convention, but so, red line for line, and.
Besides voting for the, I think what you're saying, Keith, besides voting for the priority, we can also not vote or dissent from some of the others that are, that are, language is not clear, or-
Right, exactly.
-in conflict with what we think should be.
And I would also say, too, that now's the time to contact legislators while they're not as busy, because this seems to be the few times they're really listening to us, and it's important for parents and community members to get their voice to them as well, because they get tired of listening to us.
It's also a campaign, campaign year for many of Iowa House and Senate members, so they seem to be listening a little bit closer right now.
So, I'd like to, I agree with everything that everyone else has said, but I'd also like to take a look at franchise fees. So, we currently pay, the school district pays 3% for the city of Cedar Rapids for the electric, and I don't know what it is for Mid-Am for gas, but I believe Des Moines or somewhere around Des Moines petitioned against the franchise fees, and it's no longer imposed on them. I think that's, that's cash right out of the gate. Our utility bills are high in an aggregate manner, so I think that's something that we should take a look at as well. And all nonprofits, nonprofits do not pay a franchise fees, fee, I think there's a good argument to be had for school districts.
That's great. I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Raphael, oh, I'm sorry.
Utilities can go up to 5%, which Cedar Rapids intends to do in the next couple of years. They just went to 3% this year, so. Would you like to add that?
I was going to say I should have in some of the previous comments, that we can write our own, too. I mean, if there is a, a new priority that we would like, we certainly can submit it. We, I think we were the ones that submitted home rule a few years back, or were one of several districts that did.
So, the franchise fee does exist in here, it's number 25.
Okay. Take a look at it. Raphael, do you have any?
Yeah, kind of along with what was said, with the obvious benefits with preschool, early literacy, and just thinking of the impact that, you know, those types of either programs would have with kids. The other thing was the unfunded mandates. That, to me, was kind of a big deal. If we're being asked to implement something without any funding or the resources available, you know, with the limited resources available that, you know, would be given to us, and it kind of comes into play with state supplemental aid, or supplemental state aid, what is that expectation, then? How can it be successful if you're given a mandate, you're not given the resources to really implement it and to be able to do it successfully? So, that, to me, was a big deal, because I think we've had a few here recently that have been unfunded mandates.
Would have been the implementation of our summer reading program, summer school for next summer, then they pushed that off, but not indefinitely.
Right.
And then another example will be whatever happens with the state assessment.
The assessment.
But there's another example of an underfunded mandate that's worth, and this may just confound things, but when you look at what's happening with special education deficits in the state as well as other special population deficits, there must be something awry with the way the state funds that, because more and more districts are ending up with a deficit, then they have to go to the School Budget Review Committee, get the additional authority, and then they go back to their taxpayers to backfill that cost from the state. And so, in addition to unfunded mandates, there are also underfunded mandates in the form of special education and English language learner students in particular, but.
Adequate funding, you know, I think that just seems to be across the board, just, it's very difficult, and almost impossible for us to provide the kind of education we want without adequate funding. As we said earlier, I think, Dr. Buck, as you said, some of the cuts we made, they weren't, they weren't good for children. They weren't the best, they were done out of necessity, and we need adequate funding so we don't have further.
So, we can only submit four, right?
That's what they're asking.
That's what they're asking for, four. Is there a way for us, I know we did this once before, where we combine, you know, just do our own that says we support adequate funding for schools, and combine the parts of some of these that we feel are important, so that we can also get at the, you know, the franchise fees, dropout, preschool, mental health, and a couple of the other issues.
If you look at a majority of the resolutions on here, quickly scanning through it, funding, the actual word, funding, or fund, has got to be in at least a third of them.
Right.
So, if there, if there were a way for us to, to bring that, call that to the attention and say, you know, how can we just identify one funding? It is funding.
Funding, and then pull together under it some of the examples.
Exactly, exactly. List some of those examples, and then, and then hit the franchise fee and those other components.
So, in those first two, Resolution 20 and 21, is there one of those that stands out more or less in terms of, both of those are related to supplemental state aid and foundation formula?
You know, the first, the school funding policy, 20, overall talks about adequate and timely funding. The 21 is more about specific, getting into setting those, the dates for. So, actually, if they did it timely and according to the law, 21 really would be accomplished with 20. And I can see we could very easily argue that mental health resources could go into providing adequate funding, as is early literacy funding, as required, as part of the adequate funding. They'll all become part of that overall.
Or five.
Do it, so if they take care of that, they really would take care of-
Four, five.
Four, five, nine, 10, and 27 could probably all get pulled into that.
Thank you.
August 11th.
We have another meeting before then?
Yeah.
So, what about the concept of trying, Gary, would you be willing, I mean, just throwing this out there-
Yeah.
-to write up one of our own funding, taking the best of what we've just talked about, and maybe a couple of these other items that aren't necessarily directly funding related? We have one more meeting before these have to be-
Right.
-submitted, and then that would give us one more chance to go back. You could email us out the draft proposal, and we could give you direct feedback at the board table and finalize it?
I will do that, and then- And see if we can then pick up some of these other great areas, too, that, such as the home rule and, and franchise fees and so on.
Does that seem reasonable to everyone? Okay.
And I'll share, share you that board lets it all on.
Wonderful. We appreciate that.
You know, I mean, they like to get the, get feeling which ones are the most important, but they also like to get a feeling of what's going on.
Absolutely. And we appreciate, Keith, your service on the IASB board, so, thank you. All right. Thanks, Gary, for that, and we'll look forward to a final discussion next time on that one.
Do you mind to table that?
Well, yes, we will table that until the next board meeting in August. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to BA 17030. It's the appointment of the School Board Secretary, and we have a resolution before us for the appointment of the Secretary of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the county of Lynn, state of Iowa. The resolution is resolved that Laurel A. Day be hereby appointed as Secretary of the Board of Directors, is written in our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as written?
Oh, move.
Second.
Second.
This is a roll call vote?
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye.
And with that, Laurel, would you like to come up front here and give you the oath? Microphone's good? Awesome. All right. Do you, Laurel A. Day, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Secretary of the Cedar Rapids Community School District and the county of Lynn, state of Iowa, as now, hereafter required by law? If so, please respond by saying, "I do."
I do.
Thank you for your service.
All right. Next, we have another resolution before us. This resolution is a resolution for the appointment of the treasurer of the board of directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the county of Lynn, state of Iowa. It's resolved that Steve Graham be hereby appointed as treasurer of the board of directors for a term of one year, beginning July eighteenth, twenty-sixteenth, as written in our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And this is a roll call vote.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Ann Hall?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye.
Would you like to come forward?
I'll smile at your Charlie Brown eyes.
Yeah.
I'll smile.
All right. Do you, Steve Graham solemnly swear that you will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of treasurer of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the county of Lynn, state of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? If so, please respond by saying, I do.
I do.
Congratulations. And I want to personally, on behalf of the board of directors, thank both Laurel and Steve for their ongoing commitment and service to the board as secretary and as treasurer. So thank you very much. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Buck, our interim HR director. So I'll, there you go, Dr. Buck.
So by way of reminder, we have a, we use SubCentral. It's organized by Grantwood Area Education Agency, and it's us and several other districts. And that's how we obtain our subs. And so a group of human resource professionals from a variety of districts got together to take a look at the day-to-day and long-term substitute teacher rates for the upcoming school years, uh, school year. So you'll notice that in, there's a recommendation for the day-to-day rate to increase that by fifty cents this year, and they're not recommending an increase for the long-term sub rates this year. So there's a recommendation in front of you, and this would be in line with what will happen with SubCentral used by lots of districts.
Great. Are there any questions of Dr. Buck about this? All right. And so this is a roll call vote, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Roll call, okay. So is there a motion to approve this stipulation of substitute teacher pay for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year?
So moved.
Second? All right. This is a roll call vote.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Ann Hall?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we're going to move into the board work session. We're just going to stay here, and we wanted a chance to have Dr. Buck talk with us a little bit, along with the administration, about the leadership goals for the board and for the superintendent in the coming year to give us a, a head start instead of waiting into the fall to do that. And we did send out, or I sent out a couple of days ago, the board goals as written. And Dr. Buck, do you want to comment a little bit about the, the overall district goals and how that maybe ties into your goals, and then we can talk about the board goals related to that?
Yeah, so you have a packet of information in front of you, and if I could just walk you through what's contained in there, so just try to give you a little bit of grounding, excuse me, background in sort of where the conversation has been and sort of where it's headed and how that might, excuse me, influence what you're thinking about as a board of education related to board goals and then ultimately superintendent goals. So the first document that I'd ask you to look at looks like this. Does everybody have that one? So that document, there's a very similar one to that document, two pages in. So you have these two documents, and they have largely been guiding the board work over, I think, the last several years, at least the last six to eight. That's kind of the, okay. And so what you would find on there is our vision of excellence for all, and our mission remains the same, core values, et cetera. And so you would notice that the board goals, even in these two iterations of it, have largely focused on sort of big ideas that continue to stay threaded through this conversation. So we want to be responsible with our financial resources and supporting our staff and students in the use of those resources. That's the fiscal integrity work. We want to be sure to work on improving our student performance. In many cases, it's already very good. We would also recognize, though, that there continues to be opportunity or achievement gaps in some of our subgroup data, and that mirrors what's happening statewide. So our racial and ethnic groups, IEP, that sort of thing. So it's really continued focus on what can we do to continue to improve the learning outcomes of all kids, but especially our kids in the subgroups and close that opportunity gap. There's been conversation about increasing family and community support, and that has remained as a thread through these. And communication has oftentimes been something that's contained in there. So we have those documents, and the second of these two documents, I believe this is the one that if you were to go into our schools, you would see this on a poster in schools as the guiding sort of strategic plan on page. And this is where I think one of the things that would be interesting to talk about in terms of a superintendent goal is we have a lot of really good work and lots of important pieces of information and data here. And I would invite that one of the things we should talk about is, as far as the superintendent responsibility, we'd try to bring some resonance across these pieces. And the reason I say that is this, if you go to the next document, this is a document that if you go to our website, you can pull it off there, and this is our district dashboard, and it's got sort of these five big ideas, and it's part of how our logoing, there's a connection between our logoing and these five big ideas. And what you would notice is these five, five big ideas, while they are somewhat connected to these ideas, they are not exactly necessarily the same thing. And there may be intentionality in that or there may not be, it may be the case that we just haven't had this sort of concerted conversation about those over the years as, as this has all unfolded. Then the next document you have in front of you is this document. This is our strategic goal update and our front-facing data document. And what's interesting about this document is there are pieces of data in this document that absolutely support pieces of each of these three other documents, but not necessarily so. And some of the data sets in here are results and outcome data, some of them are process data. And so this document, while handy and important, doesn't necessarily reflect where the conversation is headed over the last several months and into hopefully the coming months. So we have all of that. Then you have another document in front of you. Man, the rainforest cried a little today. So you have another, sorry, former seventh grade science teacher, I just can't help myself. So the, so this is the document that you've seen some of now, and this is really where especially our office of learning and leadership, that whole team, as well as Trace and his team, the six big ideas are emerging from that theory of action work. And so when you think about those six big ideas and how they're intended to be knit together over time, and that's why we chose puzzle pieces to put them together, they really get into student ownership, student learning, equity as an organization, leadership, innovation, and culture and climate. And so we have spent a lot of conversation over the last month or so in a variety of meetings that I've been a part of and lots of meetings that I've not been a part of, talking about how do we get to the point where we have strategies, tactics, and metrics to support each of those six big ideas if we really believe that if we do these six things well and in concert with each other, we're more likely to deliver on the promise of excellence for all, for all kids? So the thing that's a little bit interesting about that is, from the perspective of delivering on excellence for all, these six big ideas, especially in harmony with building even better relationships with the community, that's all a great thing. But I think Keith asked when that conversation was underway and being presented, but what about the finances or something kind of similar to that? So one of the things we recognize is these big ideas in and of themselves are likely to lead to improved learning outcomes for all of our students and hopefully better experiences for our staff members as well. But we still have to keep an eye on facilities, and we still have to keep an eye on finances. So we do not do our work in a vacuum. Money matters, and you hear it in the IAS, the legislative platform conversation that came ahead of this. And we always, we also recognize the environment in which our kids learn matters as well. So the final document I would show you is, this is the annual work plan and leadership goals. And so a lot of the goals, my understanding is a lot of the board goal and action planning work has been supported by what's, comes out of our office of learning and leadership. So high-quality implementation of professional learning communities and sort of those types of examples of things that are likely to lead to excellence for all. So I say all of that to say this, as you think about, we are, I think, a district in transition from some really great goal work, some really great strategies that have been underway, and some really great thinking. And we're transitioning to some unified thinking around six big ideas that have merged out of the theory of action work. And I think then we also, at this board table, have talked a number of times about the need to continue to work to improve our financial position as a district, and that conversation has largely been framed around our authority position. I think we've talked about that a lot. So I think to send a message as a board that you're still committed to fiscal responsibility, you've done a nice job as a board on stability of tax rate, I mean, I think there are some indicators where you're serious about the sort of fiscal approach to the district. And I think there's been conversation and direction from this board that we need to dig into the facilities conversation. So all of that to say, it's important as we think about honoring the work of the past and transitioning to the step forward, how do we bring resonance between our goals and then ultimately our strategies, tactics, and metrics? So I think that's kind of the grounding for maybe this conversation.
Absolutely. So in terms of the district goals or the superintendent's goals, so one thing that, Dr. Buck, you had talked about was the poster that's actually up in all of our schools. We may not necessarily need to change that specifically, is that right?
Well, I think for this year, I think for this year, I would encourage that we keep those posters up. I think for next, I think by spring, one of the things I'd encourage you is to direct me to work to try to bring resonance to all these pieces, and that may end up in a change in what's in our buildings. But for right now, the stuff that's in here is, I mean, we still absolutely believe in visionary leadership and safe and healthy environment, kind of all those pieces.
One of the things is, I was just going through this, you look at the dashboard piece that's on our website, makes sense. It was great to see the leadership goals. You know, those, those certainly were getting down into the weeds a little bit, but that was helpful to understand where it was moving. I was confused by these two documents when I went out and looked at those. And then we just had the presentation about the theory of action and, as Dr. Buck said, facilities and finances. So in terms of our direction to Dr. Buck, what I was thinking is to try and bring some of this together is, could we look at these six big ideas and just add in finances and facilities as part of that? Would that cover, I don't know if it's too much, we had four kind of big ideas that were the superintendent goals moving into this year when you were brand new, but a year into it, you've been doing this work with all these other stakeholders. Is that a reasonable idea, or does the board have any comments want to add to that or have different thoughts?
So we're an evolving district and hopefully always will be evolving as we have an increase in our diverse population of students and staff. So I think that makes perfectly good sense, and the theory of action has involved a much broader audience of people. And so I think your suggestion is the direction that, that we should take.
Any other, thanks, Mary. Any other thoughts or?
The document's great. Though we also have come from this time period of things being measurable and timelines. One thing that's always bothered me about education is, is it's next year. We'll be able to do this next year. You're a kindergartner this year, you know? And we got to shorten this thing up that if we got something that's not working, I just had a citizen talk to me about how bad they think our math programs still are, you know? That there's dissatisfaction out there about it. Now, that's just one person, okay? So I'm not making that statement, but, but still, we got to have these measurable. And, and maybe that's the second document. It probably should be because then it becomes, you know, kind of overbearing to read, which these things are all needed, but there's a lot of reading here, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's a great point. So one of the things we've talked about as a leadership team on several occasions is what the best hope will be on that theory of action as an example, because your point is exactly, is exactly the case. People, we're going to get to the point where you would click on this as a live link, and it would take you to a single page of what are we doing and how are we measuring it for each of these six things? And then if you click on that, you'll be able to go into a robust plan that's behind it. But if you really want a sense for what we're doing on each of these six things, you'll be able to click in and it'll tell you on a page. And then a conversation that I've been around that I'm especially excited about is, and it will have to indicate how it's supporting the other pieces of the plan. So why am I doing work in innovation and how is that helping support our equity work, for example? And I would tell you, we spent, as a team, probably nearly four hours in a meeting this afternoon, and we looked at our equity plan, and we have come a long way on that plan. And it needs redone, and we agree to that, that it needs redone in a way that makes sense to how we're now thinking about equity. And we should then have a piece underneath this that'll say, here's our equity plan on the page, and then all the robust behind it, and get into the metrics conversation. So are we seeing a closing in the gap of suspensions and an overall reduction in suspensions? Are we seeing, I mean, these very things you're describing? So that's, that's where this will be headed, yep.
So I have a question. So the third page of the theory of action, big idea handout, actually says strategic plan, and it shows the pieces broken out, and then it says, if this, whatever that piece is, then we will, action items, and down below it, I can't read it real well, but I think it says, success will be measured by, so is that what you're talking about clicking in on, this is the website, basically, or is this something different here?
Yeah, so that was an example of where it's headed. So Dr. Pickering, in particular, has been coaching us on what that might look like. So it may not look exactly like that, but ultimately it will be that sort of thing that we'll be able to give you, and it'll either be a click in on the website, or it'll be potentially like a three-column thing on one side and three-column the other that basically says, here's how we define it, here's the actions that are underway, and here's how we're measuring the scorecard. So that's, and to mine, as I've talked to folks in Cedar Rapids, we haven't had a document that does that for a while. So, and not as a criticism, it's just our thinking hasn't been organized enough. But yeah, until we get to the point where it's consumable, you know, when you have a plan like this, it's really important to the people that wrote it, but it's really hard for others to invest in because it's, it's just a lot of stuff.
Right. Kristen?
So I guess I, I'm agreeing with, first, let me say that I agree with the fact that fiscal and facilities needs to be a component of these, but do we indeed need to call them out as separate, or aren't they inherent in each one of these six that we have, that as we work through those, we're thinking about the fiscal integrity efficiencies and it should be a part of our normal thoughts as we're looking at student learning and as we're looking at all of these six big ideas?
Thoughts from other board members?
I can tell you, I was thinking the same thing. I mean, I like and I understand what you described. I mean, the theory of action and everyone that was involved with it and the time that went into it, you know, investing someone's evening, you know, how many times, four different times, you know, that was a big deal. So to take what was put together by, you know, a large group of people that represent our community, our schools, as, you know, the big ideas, when I look at this, I mean, I see it almost as three-D. I see the underlying or supporting things are the facilities, are the fiscal responsibility. So I could almost flip this three-D, and there'd be a whole layer underneath of facilities and our fiscal responsibility, right?
For me, it was the white space.
Yeah, so.
All of the white space in between those puzzle pieces is where I saw. All of the white space in between those puzzle pieces is where I saw fiscal and facilities. It's just, it's, it's in there, and it's, it's a part of everything. So, I was right there with you.
Yeah.
Not drawing it out, because I think, I think we need to get away from thinking about fiscal responsibility in isolation of everything else. Fiscal responsibility, just like we look at the back of this sign, is how will this decision impact our students? You know, what is the, what is the fiscal impact of these, of the things that we want to do, and how will it trickle down? And as you were saying, Dr. Buck, how does, how does one puzzle piece impact, how does student ownership impact leadership? So, how does the fiscal commitments that we're making for leadership, how is that going to affect the other things? Or can we partner and pair and, you know?
And how is it impacted or supported by facilities?
Exactly.
That are underlying, right?
Exactly.
You know, we're, we live with limited resources. We don't have unlimited resources. So, the reality is that we're constantly looking at, are we fiscal responsible? Can we afford to do it or not? And at what cost, or shifting from one, one area to another? But it's something that is just built in inherently to it. I don't see it as, as having to put an outlier. It's built into our work.
Well, when we get into the facilities conversation, one of the drivers of the facilities conversation is, what does a school for the 21st century look like? Although, we kind of smile, because aren't we, we're 16 years in, so kids, whole classes have graduated already, but, but what does the learning facility look like, and what can we envision it looking like? And how does what we want, the way in which we want kids to learn, drive facilities conversations? And so, I agree 100%. You know, so what you're thinking, it's like my brain, I didn't do this well, but then it becomes three dimensional. So, there's a fiscal slice that underpins all that. And then, the facilities in which kids and adults, adults work and kids, yeah.
But aren't we talking about board deal and district deal? So, then we shift the...
So, this is, Dr., we're talking right now about what we're going to hold Dr. Buck responsible for. Yep.
My point is, is that the fiscal responsibility lies more with the board. Of course, it lies with you, too. But, you know, for our talking legislators and trying to get the funding, maybe that more appropriately belongs as one of the board goals than...
Yeah, because I think a dimension is not only that you're using your resources well, but that you're advocating for. I think there's dimensions to fiscal that just aren't, how are you spending your money? How are you also working to optimize it by having strategic partners, by, you know, advocating for additional, I mean, lots of dimensions to it.
Right.
But just also reemphasize, I'm just looking here, one page, page that says, increase graduation rate. To me, that goal has to be that we're at this, and by this date, we'll try and be at that. And the next date, we'll try and be at that, so that, that there's some accountability that's there. You know, oh, you got one more student to walk across the stage. No, that's not what we're after. So, that's your second part of making that more measurable, right?
Yeah.
That we'll see that.
And that was part of the conversation we had absolutely today as part of our equity conversation, is the way the current equity plan, while well done, is constructed, it probably needs shifted around a little bit in terms of, we've got a mixture of strategies and tactics in with our priorities, and it's just kind of a, so it just needs reoriented, and then clarity on what are the percentage of children right now of color that are, what is their percentage of graduation rate, and what do we expect to see, and what are we doing with, I mean, kind of the whole list, identification for the PAC program, et cetera.
Yep.
Well, and I'd add on all students on that, and I know you mean that as well.
Oh, yeah.
But, and then, another problem I have is talking about suspension reduction. I'm outcome based, you know, how well is this working? You know, do suspensions, if they're working for certain groups of students, or us start, I should say, a certain student, you know, we got to be concerned that, are we getting where we want? We want every student graduating.
Yeah. And I think that's also part of the, the work we're doing with restorative practices and some of that. Where does restorative practice fit into this conversation? And, and as suspensions go down, are our schools more safe is still a fair question. So, you can do, you can drive numbers in different ways, but then how do you collect information about, do we have a belief that they, not only are suspension rates down, but do restorative practices actually lead to a safer environment? So, I mean, it's, it's more complex than to just, than to just say, we had fewer suspensions, so the situ, it must be safer. Yeah.
And I understand your comments regarding that, that layer underneath, but I just want to make sure that layer underneath is prevalent, is built into, I want to make sure that that's clear. Because if you read each of the puzzle pieces, I mean, we all know that.
No, I agree. It needs to be spelled out, but I see it as being integral to every part.
Yeah, I do, too.
I think, too, if we look at the, I mean, not to jump ahead, but you look at the board goals, we do have operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, effectiveness. And we talk about ensure, you know, financial and professional resources to meet the goals. These are all things that we know boards are supposed to do. It's right out of IASB, you know, board expectations. But, at the same time, we're going to spend a lot of time over the next year talking about finances and ensuring that it's Dr. Buck and the administrators that are going to have to make sure that they're following up, that we're operating with that fiscal integrity, that we're doing our part to try and get resources. But really, it's him and his team that are having to make sure that they're allocating those resources appropriately. And the facilities, I agree, all this ties in together, but we're going to spend a lot of time in the next year talking about those issues. And I want to make sure that that's, whether it's, you know, in support of all of these other six big ideas, in my mind, that needs to just sort of be made clear, that this is underlying supporting. And that's fine, however you want to envision it. How do you feel about that as a board, trying to bring those couple of ideas in support of these six big ideas? And, I mean, if we need to visualize it differently in this, we can certainly do that. But, the basic thing would be to keep these six big ideas, he needs to show us, you know, as he has mapped out here, or however, he works with trace on this, to say, this is the big idea, this is what we as administrators are going to hold ourselves accountable for by these actions, and these are how we're going to measure it by the end of the year. Is that fair?
Yeah, and as a board, yeah. And we should be able to provide you periodic updates on how the progress we're making across each of these dimensions. Yep.
So, the one thing that, oh, the one thing that doesn't make any sense to me anymore is this little trifold flyer. You know, the, the strategic plan is listed in here, but it's bits and pieces that aren't necessarily tied to our strategic plan, as Dr. Buck has said. So, how does the board feel about this? This is what we're handing out, or this is what we're putting out there? It's different than what's on the website.
I think that there needs to be, there needs to be that linkage. We need to have more of that alignment. So, so you can trace back to the board goals, your goals, this document. You can pull that thread, as you were saying, and say, I know that this supports this from the board goals, or there, it needs to be a little more cohesive in my mind.
And so, we should review where we use this piece. I think that in the past, we've used this in an annual event where we invited stakeholders in, and we could just kind of add a glance on a page without a lot of explanation, kind of give people a sense of where we're at. So, I agree with everything you said. This has to align with the rest of what our pieces look like, but I still think we need a piece for those kinds of events, which I hope we continue to do from time to time.
It's almost like it needs to align with this district dashboard, you know, the star. I mean, if we're going to click into that, say, this is what we're holding ourselves accountable for, it needs to sort of match with that and support that, which really then should go back and support the six big ideas. Gary?
It's, our role as a board to reflect the community. And we talk about the six big ideas, as I really think about this, this isn't Dr. Buck's six big ideas. This isn't the board's six big ideas. These were generated from the community, from community input. And so, as I look at this, and as a board member, what I'm seeing is, a plan on the page, to me, this is what the community wants our schools to look like. I think that what we're saying is, if this is what they want, if we're providing literature and support, this should look more like this. And the fiscal responsibility, it's our responsibility, and I like what you said, we tend to jump to right away being good stewards of the money, which it is, but it's also being good advocates for having the resources. Our community wants this. It's our responsibility to be able to provide or work at providing the resources so that they can have the kind of schools that they want.
You know, it's interesting. I hadn't thought about that tri-fold as a page of each of the six pieces. That's a really great idea. And put some results oriented metrics attached to those, because part of the challenge in that document now is it has some process objectives. So, like 31 of our schools have engaged in PBIS training or whatever. That's, that's great to know, but how does that lead to improved student social emotional behavior outcomes in that school? It's not an outcome. And I'm trying to remember another example off of there.
I think it needs to answer the so what.
Yeah. So, I think, you know, that's really an interesting idea, is to make this so that it's got the six pieces of that theory of action, and do some associated metrics that are kind of the so what metrics. That's, that'll be, yeah, that's a great way to think about. And then, it probably does need a finance, I don't know, how many, how many does this make? One, two, it makes eight? Yeah. So, there probably does need to be a finance one of their some, because that, of all things, if, you know, if you ask the superintendent, what does, what does the public talk to you about? Half of the things would be finance, and the other half is everything else. So, I mean, they do want to know, are we being responsible?
So, in terms of superintendent goals, does all of that make sense in our outward explanation to the public about it? Does it make sense to you, Dr. Buck?
Yeah, that's great.
Cool. All right. And then, in terms of the board goals, these board goals, we've had these in existence for at least a few years now. They basically are right following what IASB suggests, and they were tied into, I think, some of the district goals in the past. For me, I, I could keep these just as is unless others had thoughts about things that we need to change or reflect some other priorities. So, any, any other thoughts or comments, Keith?
I think these are fine as a board, but I think we need to take it a step further as individual board goals, you know, in, in our training and education of what individually we're going to do as school board members.
I think it would be nice to see if we could expand on them to include some of the, some of our specific district goals into our board. I like, I agree that having the basic IASB ones are nice, but how do we customize this to show how Cedar Rapids Community School Board is different and in, in alignment with what our district goals are?
I completely agree with that. These, these should be in support of district goals. And as those continue to evolve, then we, we need to look at this and, and change that accordingly. And Keith, I think that's a laudable goal, but quite honestly, we all work very hard in our day jobs, and there's going to be a year or two that our own individual development is not going to be as robust as we had intended it to be. So, I hate to put something in writing, because once I see it in writing, I, yeah, and I don't meet that goal, I have problems with that.
Well, but an individual goal is exactly that, you know, individually, instead of as a board, you will do this, 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 yes. I mean, I follow what you're saying.
We have a statement in, I mean, participate in ongoing regular school board member development activities that center on effective board practices to raise student achievement. So, so under that, are you suggesting then that each of us take that and list specifically what we intend to do?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm saying, that is no different than, this is a broad statement that isn't really measurable. So, what, what are the things that we should intend to do? It doesn't mean you have to. But, but we ought to have that, for instance, that you attend the state meeting, you know, or go to an IASB meeting or something outside the district, so that as a board, you know, that, that we can say, these are things that we're doing as a board, because we're, you know, we're getting criticized all the time when you do those studies. And so, well, you know, what's, the, the board isn't doing these things. We need to be able to say back to the community that we are. And, and part of the reason why I'm bringing this up is there's a big force in the eastern states to require it. And I'd rather be ahead of the game, say, we are already doing this on a voluntary basis.
So, I think, you know, as a...
I can discuss that more with you later, but...
Yeah, absolutely.
I just think that we as a board and the committee needs to be sure that we are all working as well.
I think, you know, IASB is our professional organization along with NSBA, and, and they do track our participation, as I understand it, right? There's, there are board development points and those sorts of things. So, are you proposing that each board member then report back to the entire board of their activities, or just them, they themselves just say, this is what I am...
Yeah, they themselves are, these are things that I'm trying to do this year, you know, and to obtain. And maybe for new board members, it would be different than what mine would be. But at least there's something out there as a board member that, that you're trying to do through the year that's measurable.
Yep. Nothing explained that way. I agree with that. I think I hear from Dr. Buck a lot, that growth mindset, right? That's what that is?
Yeah. We, we expect individual plans out of all of our, our staff members. So...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
The hippie dippy. Yeah. We actually left a meeting today, and one of the commitments we had to make, not had to, had the opportunity to, and it's going to be a good thing. What's, what's one thing individually you intend to do to get better by the time we meet again next time? And so...
So, as, as an...
As simple as that.
Yeah. And I think as an elected board, I mean, we don't have, I mean, I can't hold you personally specifically accountable for doing that. You're elected separate than I'm elected than anyone else is elected to the school board. But in having this in our statement, this is our goal, this is what we, what we hold as our value as a board, that all of us will do our own board professional development throughout the year. And I, I think, I mean, there are board members that will take time and explain what they've learned. You know, you come back from a conference or a session and kind of talk about that, and maybe that's sort of part of that expectation. We don't have to overtly state that, but that is one way of showing the public some of the things that we're learning and helping other board members.
One of the other things I'd kick out there, too, is in that schedule that you have that we worked on, we're putting a number of work sessions in there. And, and so what we'll try to do in support of your ongoing professional learning as a team is to build in some pieces at times, because some of those topics, like multi-tiered system of support for academics, multi-tiered system supportive behavior, some of what we'll do with the board is some framing around what those pieces are, and to give you some, a little more robust background in these things, even though we talk about them fairly frequently. So, I think there'll be opportunities for professional learning built into that schedule that John gave out, and we can be intentional about some of that, too. So, because you are busy. I mean, yeah, I mean, trying to honor...
I don't want anyone to misunderstand that.
No, we're trying to honor the balance.
You know, others, I sit on Grantwood AEA board, so there's, there's a lot of activities associated with that, and I read journals and things like that. I just, I'm not, so I don't want anyone to misunderstand my statement that I'm not interested in professional development. I'm more interested in, in broader comments like that than I'm going to attend this many events or read this many things. And that's just me.
I, and I would tend to agree with that. But again, I think sitting here at the board table, you know, in public open meeting and discussions, I mean, we're committing ourselves to do what we can to have that growth mindset and whatever that is. And if you can help other board members out in understanding what you're learning, that's all, you know, more benefit to all of us, I guess. So, so in terms of the board goals that are here as we have written, is, is, are there any specific suggestions that you would like us to do to take this, to leave this, or to add something that's about in support of the theory of action goals that we're giving to the superintendent to support, you know, those goals?
I would like to see some language that marries them a little bit better. And I don't know that it's rewriting them. It's just so that it's complimentary, and it's clear that this board goal would support this. And it, we, one of the goals may support a couple of things, but finding a way to, to... may support a couple of things, but finding a way to, to tie them together, I think is important.
Others sort of feel that way as well? Would you be willing to take a look at that, since you brought it up?
(laughing)
And, and just ta- take a stab at it? And then by maybe our next meeting, um, just shoot us out, gi- give me an email first and I'll run it by Dr. Buck and just see if it kind of aligns with what we're thinking and then-
Can I ask that if you guys add some language about the facilities and the fiscal to the six, um, that you provide that to me as well so that we can build, so that it can continue to have that cohesion?
Uh, yes, uh, yes. So the, my only hedge is this. I, if, uh, so last year, as you think about what I worked on for kind of my formative feedback from the board, and we met about quarterly, and I had that document that was kind of landscaped. And so I've, I've sort of started that as a draft, recognizing that facilities was likely to remain in the conversation, given where we've been as a board and team. Um, finances are likely to just be in the mix, and then this theory of action. So I have started that document with some draft action steps, et cetera. Would that be helpful to what you're describing?
You know, I don't, I'll, I'll just connect to, with you and see.
Okay.
Cause that may be the easiest way. But yeah, I'll look at the six and see.
Okay.
If anyone on the board has any comments that they would like specifically, don't hesitate to let me know.
That sounds great. Thank you. Kristen, for your willingness to do that and help us out. And, uh, so, Dr. Buck, I think it's pretty clear, we, we want the six theory of actions and somehow tie in that finance and facilities as a supporting of, of those actions. Um, Kristen, you'll take our board goals and come up with some more supporting di- wording, I guess, so that at the next meeting, we'll have something in the agenda just to say, this is what we've come up with, is this agreeable, and go from there. Any other thoughts or comments on that? I mean, these are really our, your, your board goals, so I don't wanna dictate any of this.
Well, hopefully it's a living document, one that as we continue to flush out the puzzle pieces-
Yeah, and we really-
-that this follows in, in tandem with that.
Yeah, I agree. And we have really, uh, you know, there's some really interesting and exciting work underway. And we saw that today, even in the equity plan, well done when written, but where we are now, a year later as a community and committee, it's just, it's, it's unbelievable. It's actually kind of those things that you feel pretty good about. Man, we have made some progress here. Um, I think that'll be true across all these dimensions, so, yeah.
Then I'll just add one, one final thing, sorry. So it's exciting. It's awesome to see. I think we can all see it, like, start to take shape and starting to come alive. But we even has, have it as a board goal, the communication plan. So even if there's some way, I mean, that to me is a big deal, how we communicate it, how it's interpreted, how it's perceived. It'd be great, I mean, to even have a, an advanced look, a preview or soft opening of what it's gonna look like and what information might be presented once it's actually available.
Oh, sure, absolutely. And, and on that related note, Marcia Hughes has been working with, um, a variety of stakeholders, and she has put together a communications, a revised communications plan for the district. And she is intending to present that sometime in the next couple of board meetings. So that'll be another piece too, that I think will be helpful. And she'll be interested in your feedback as a board about how you might see it being further improved. So I think that'll be another piece too. Not exactly what you're describing, Rafael, but just know that we have been working on communication plan as well. So just more broadly than-
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Any other comments or feedback about the board goals? Okay, terrific. Um, well, I think, uh, that kind of wraps that up, and I appreciate everybody's involvement and interaction with this. And we'll move forward, um, at the next meeting with, um, kind of finalizing those board goals. And if there's nothing else, um, you have the school board calendar coming up here on, on the agenda. And if you have any feedback on those, those work session ideas for the next year, feel free to share those. And with that, the, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thanks so much.